Yeah.
This meeting of the mayor and the board of Alden for the city of Cleveland is now in session. If you have any business before this board, please come forward and you'll be murdered.
Dave, would you like to pray?
Let us pray. Our dear heavenly Father, we come this hour of the evening to give thanks for the many blessings that have restored unto us. We thank you for the privilege and we thank you for the opportunity for allowing us to come together to discuss the business of the city. We pray that everything we do and say will be in your will. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
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 Uh, looks like the first thing we need to order to appoint city officials.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Robert, second by Danny, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
Uh, we need an order to designate duties.
So move.
Second. Motion by Brian, second by Ted, all in favor.
Aye.
An order to approve designation of Mayor Pro Tim.
So move.
I don't.
We have to.
You can't. Do yourself.
I move.
You're going to be Mayor Pro Tim.
Oh. There, I move.
I make a motion, we make Ted.
Motion by Gaines Pellet, second. Abraham, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. You got it, Dave.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, visitor, Cecil Barnett.
What's up, bro? How you doing, Cecil? Hey. Yes. Thank you.
Right.
Um, we're here for, to try to, I guess, give permission to turn the city water on to Delta State. Because we're renovating our water tower.
How long is that gonna take?
About two months.
Have you talked, have you talked with Thomas about it?
So now we got a problem with the tower, right?
About a little bit.
Uh, yes, sir. So hospital water tower is still down. One thing I'm gonna be asking for tonight, they've already come up with a boat repair that. Uh, I spoke with Josh and with his being out of school, it shouldn't be a problem. It shouldn't have too much of a demand. I did ask for them to give me their system on. Uh, tells me they're normal, uh, day-to-day usage. So we can go from there.
Will it affect our pressure?
It shouldn't. Uh, now, it's supposed to take about two months. I don't know if that's gonna lead into kids coming back to school. Uh, hopefully we should have hospital water tower fixed by then.
Haven't we done this before?
Delta State has, uh, had on our, our line before. I don't think it's lasted that long.
Uh, we've act, we've actually done this before, we have. Yeah. Now I make a motion, we allow Delta State to hook to our water system while they're in repair. A second.
Motion by Gaines Pellet, second by Abraham, all in favor.
I, I actually, I wanted to make sure that Thomas did give us a periodic updating how it's going. But we definitely.
Sure.
Can we, can we just make sure there's, you know, there's some issue with metering? There's no meter on the connection. How is the water gonna be quantified? You can estimate it as long as it was good runtime data off the wells, which I assume y'all have.
We, we do.
I don't believe they escaped it.
We, we do. We, we hooked up about two weeks ago.
It's K D M?
Yes, sir.
Yes, you, you could estimate it and do that. And another thing, and I told Michelle and Thomas the story, uh, I hate to even say I was involved. We were involved with something like this before, not, not city of Cleveland, Delta State. I don't think it's gonna be an issue. You. But when I see systems trying to back their system, you're not typically just feeding if the demand. So I think Danny, you have just something that the city of Cleveland has been perused. You. This is, uh, whatever, one spot across campus, cause you're only feeding out campus from one bike location. So my other thing, I don't have a couple little, little.
All right.
You're doing so.
Okay.
Let me tell you.
Yes, I'm Nate Tolliver, former. Old, been here for a while. And, uh, I wanted to address the street situation that we actually have in, uh, Ward Six in South Cleveland there. Um, I learned a lot about, uh, streets, uh, with engineer Charles Dean, uh, being on the street committee, perhaps maybe eleven or twelve years. And we in terms actually has been trying to get our street service for the last, I would say nine or ten years. And, uh, I went by, uh, nearly office probably about nine, ten years. So say maybe another year or two, perhaps. And then awaited and continued to actually, uh, await. And, uh, as you know, when you perhaps maybe, uh, put a little flag, a little asphalt, uh, patch and feed cut hole, that little kind of like tokenism in, in terms of, uh, uh, your speech lasts for a while. Okay? So we had in terms, when I was here, in terms of the asphalt, if you don't, uh, lose about every seven years, you lose your whole base. When you lose your whole base, that mean that it costs the city more money. So I was wondering what kind of actually, uh, you know, happened to that particular with in your street? When you do that, your street becomes subsaner.
Ned, can, can we get our engineer to address that?
Let's, he brought it up.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Let me, let me finish it, then, then we'll let him make the thing. Okay? I will, um, we were by John and I, Dave was probably by engineer office, maybe a couple of years ago. And we're supposed to actually come and see what we need to done, be done before we actually, uh, uh, get the pavement. We hadn't heard anything, or seen anything. And that been over two years ago. So, uh, you know, I'm, I'm wondering if it's just one of those things where they just push you off and then ship aside until the next time to come. And I'd like to say.
There's specific seats, Ned, specific streets, aren't there?
Yeah.
That you're talking about, or just all the streets? I mean.
It was a couple of street. It was, uh, Cowan Drive and, and, uh, Southland, uh, Southland. So Miss, John and I, Dave went by to actually, you know, check when city, we see what we can actually do. And, uh, we, we had heard anything. And, uh, about a couple of weeks ago, uh, Mullin Road was actually, uh, paved. And Mullin Road was actually paved. You know, big trucks come down, uh, leave the road to south of them and, and Cowan Drive. And you come down with those big trucks. And you know those big trucks actually, you got about a inch and a half of asphalt. They, they come up. And you see, uh, that was nothing planned to actually, uh, survey them after those big trucks and things actually, uh, 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 come down after them. And see, if Charles Dean would have actually, uh, uh, had, uh, uh, something right behind it to actually, uh, fix them. And, uh, because they know that those big trucks would pay up the street while they actually coming down to take care of, you know, that's the street, yeah.
Josh, can you address any?
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely take a look. If there was any damage caused by contractor with trucks accessing that road, we'll have that addressed. As far as pavement, Southland and, and Cowan, they get inspected every year. City of Cleveland, uh, they do a citywide street inspection, reclassifying ranking. I know we sat down that day a year or two ago, I showed you all the maps. Uh, but they do do that every year. And then they prioritize it based on the current street ranking, the conditions they change from year to year, along with taking into account traffic volumes. So streets like, uh, Crispin, South Crispin, and even Mullins, everybody, uh, and South Street that we did this year in Maple and all, streets with a higher traffic volume are more, they're higher up priority list. They're gonna have more people driving down, uh, they're gonna get ranked. So if you both rank, uh, uh, five, two identical strengths, same condition, one of them has twice the amount of traffic, that one's gonna get prioritized over the ones with lower traffic. So, uh, but no, we do look at Cowan, we look at Southland every year. Both of them are ranking a six. Uh, they're ranking above, uh, what we've been trying to repair five and belows. So, uh, as long as this board continues with this long-range street improvement plan, we'll definitely get there for a full Millin overlay. But until then, it's gonna have to be continue to be maintained, just like all these other streets, public works. We'll have patches come up and on street sweepers. Uh, you'll see edge rattling, what starts happening on this old oxidized asphalt you've earned too. Now I'll have patches in them and that's just, that's unfortunate. It's part of the process. We can't fix everything. It's only so much money every year. So, uh, it'll get there eventually, as long as the board continues funding this program. But it's not gonna happen this year uh, unless we find some additional funds of some other pot. Uh, I wouldn't anticipate it happening the next couple of years, honestly. Um, given what we're seeing and how this thing's kind of tracking out.
But you keep repairing and filling in the pot of holes.
That's all we do. The city maintains almost eighty miles of street. And, uh, it's expensive. Every mile of Millin overlay is very expensive. You, you just only way to eat elephant, you kind of just keep starting. And make sure when you do repairs, you do them properly, so you're not back in there in five years or so. And, uh, it's the only way to get it done. So we're, we're working on it. It's just gonna take time and money.
Yeah, and will you, uh, explain the, those pothole process, uh? Uh, some streets, uh, some of the potholes are larger, you know, in, in different streets and things. Uh, the city, uh, asks you, uh, do the pothole, uh, that crew, that work direction with the city do the pothole. But as far as, uh, you know, a large ring, a, a big gap or something, then contractor come in and do that.
Yeah, so, so the city in-house public works does asphalt patching. They'll come, uh, address some edge rattling. They'll dig out the street, uh, and patch it. And what happens is when streets get in a bad enough condition where they warrant a contracted, where we, we have the funds available and they rank them on, we'll do a contracted repair and we'll come in actually, Millin overlay, and sometimes it includes, uh, kind of substantial hot next asphalt patching as well. We're just, we're, I mean, the, I looked at those streets today. We're just, we're, it's just not there yet, to be honest. It's gonna continue to take some maintenance done by the public works until we get far enough in this street improvement process to, uh, the Millin overlay.
Well, you know, if we have said, you all set the back for, for, you know, setting the street back for a while. And we losing some of the streets because we waiting so long to actually reach for them. And if you, if you wait a long time, then you lose the whole street. And that mean the, the, the city lose money. And that's why I was always thought that you try to save the city money i- if you possibly can. And I know, look, I pay a lot of taxes. I was just looking at my taxes a couple of days ago. Proper detective, I have a loving taxi. I must have paid about fifteen thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars. That's a lot of money. And if came to get a little something done to your street, then it sound like taxation without representation. I just wondering, you know, when you, when you hear and I see some things actually happen, been there, uh, seen this actually happen. And, uh, you make no effort, you keep pushing things back. It's continue to get worse. That's what I'm, that's, that's what, what I want to address. And I, I just like, when I went up by your office some time ago, I like tell you like a couple of years ago, this is Southland was like number one on the list. And, uh, by, by five, seven, six, something, that nature. You was supposed to come out and check those kind of thing. It didn't happen. No accountability. So that's why I'm here to address this kind of thing, so it won't continue to, to go on.
Ned, will you allow us to get with Josh? And we'll get the listing of what streets and where we are and where your streets are. Uh, to answer this, I don't think anybody here has a list of the streets right now that we're. Josh has got a map, actually has a map.
Say, we just looked at it.
The city's repair, uh, processed. We can get you a copy of that map, Ned.
Yeah. But like I said, the map and, 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 and the, uh, things they're on the paper, maybe not addressing was actually on the paper. I just built brand-new garage about a year or two ago. In front of it, every time the street sweeper come back, the asphalt is just crumbling. By the end of day, this morning, I just look at that fall, just coming up. So this is what I'm, what, 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 what I'm talking about. These things haven't been, you know, haven't been addressed.
Well, let's take a look at it. You will, and we'll get the list. I hadn't seen the map, as you know, on, on those meetings. Uh, but I do remember how we scheduled streets. And let me see and get an update and I'll be glad to give you a call. I'll talk to Josh and we'll see what, what, where they are falling and be glad to let you know.
It's in April. Lord, make that list.
And, and to address your question you asked me about the street committee, I don't know if any other board members, uh, know about the street committee. You all may have had it at one time. I told him, Mr. Mayor, we don't have any street, uh, mem, I mean, uh, board members on the street committee. So we, we take care on board.
Mm-hmm. Right. That's correct.
They're even near.
But we have limited money and that's the problem.
Yeah.
We try to set aside one point five million a year.
Right.
Approximately one point five a year and address the ones that are high-traffic area and they need it the most at the time. But we'll certainly do it. The mayor said he's gonna do it and he'll do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I can tell you this, just looking at the list, uh, Southland is actually scheduled to be worked on in twenty twenty-seven, in two years. It's on the list. Uh, Arnold is scheduled to be, uh, preliminary, right? That subject changed depending on the condition. He's talking about Cowan, but he also mentioned South.
Okay.
But then Young is right there too, right?
Yeah.
There, that's gonna be the following year. So they're, they're actually on the schedule, right? To, to his point, we've, we've got a schedule. But a couple of those streets you referenced are there. We just gotta get there.
That was based on testing of the roads and not just by glancing.
No.
Okay. Well, I'll be waiting and that, you know, I'll be back.
Thank you, man. Thank you.
Good day.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay. Can I borrow this? No problem.
All right. Uh, Danny, okay then.
Uh, this is John. He was along with him. I have tea.
Yeah, may I speak? Sure. All right. You're speaking on the same thing?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all. Thank you for what you do for the city of Cleveland. I live in South Cleveland in Ward Six, Mr. Campbell's award. And I've been living on that street since it incorporated into the city. And I paid proper footage assessment for the street to be uh, constructed as far as the resident portion of it's concerned. And, and that's been in the neighborhood fifty years. And there's been no repair done. And what is happening, it is crumbling from the side. And then Mr. Tolliver made reference to of the asphalt is continuing to peel. And of course, you can almost use a lawn mower coming from the curb to the middle of the street where grass has grown through the asphalt. And it's not gonna get into better. And it, uh, as may reference to repairs or patching, I don't recall any patching even trying to stabilize uh, the part, uh, toward the curb. And to my understanding, you know, Ward Six is incorporated into, uh, the city of Cleveland. And I don't think that we get into special rates in terms of our assessed valuation on our properties there. And the only thing that I'm always concerned about is that, you know, the services that a resident in the city of Cleveland deserve, they get those services. And any kinds of revelation that we have to adhere to or interdepartment having to enforce any policies or orders in the city of Cleveland, that we do it uniformly all over the city of Cleveland, uh, because we are, are taxed in the same fashion. Uh, I don't, I never expected any, uh, special favors from anyone. I just wanted to be treated fairly and just, and administer the rules of regulations in the city of Cleveland, all over the city of Cleveland. And it's obvious that sometime you go in certain areas, certain thing can happen and it's not addressed, whether it's, uh, regulatory or the implementation of the audience or whatever it is. Uh, if, if I am subject to the consequences, then hold me accountable and responsible to consequences. Because I pay taxes in the same proportion anyone else pay taxes in the city of Cleveland. And that's, that, that would always be my concern. No favors. I, I don't believe in doing this for this and this for that, just whatever it is that has been approved by this board, enforce it. Uh, whether it's strict, whether it's the maintaining of property, whether it's dilapidated cars on the side of the streets, whether it's buildings that's built that's not according to the regulation, whatever it is, let's enforce it. I realize that the, uh, assessed valuation, uh, much of the property in that area doesn't equate to the assessed valuation of properties in other areas. But that doesn't, that should not have anything to do with enforcement or policy and expectations in an area. And that would always be my concern, streetwise or otherwise. And like I'm talking, I've talked to, uh, Mr. Sanders, I've talked with, uh, Mr. Campbell's, and they're aware of what I'm saying. And I would visit with, uh, the engineer with Mr. Tolliver and Mr. Campbell, as they made reference to. But that, that would always be my concern. And that's what I would like to see happen and be a part of.
We'll be glad to be with you, like we were with Ned, when we take a look at this and where we are, where the streets are.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Gold.
Thank you, John.
I appreciate it.
Thank you both.
Wait, Josh, just to be transparent for everyone, would you please share the criteria that is used in the street assessment that you do annually?
So we, we use a, we use a program called PASSER. Uh, it's a pavement, uh, ranking system. We go evaluate it and we rank them based on, uh, you have asphalt roads, concrete streets, you have concrete overlaid asphalt roads. We rank the pavement condition based on that, generate a whole map and a list of all this. Then, uh, and we break it down per year, per category. We update annually, see how we're tracking, uh, and it's in that report. Uh, then we do, we start looking at these streets like Cowan, I see it's failing. I see the surface starting to crack. It's ranking around the borderline five and a six. I can probably get another year or two out of that pavement before I get significant base repairs. So we, we take that into account because like, like Mr. Ned was saying, pavement preservation is how you get ahead of it. Spend money on streets when they need it and you can do a lesser repair at a cheaper cost. So we do take that into account. We look at these streets. We think how far we can get out of this one and then we prioritize the money. So a lot of times you'll see a street on there, it might be ranked a one or a two, and we're not repairing anything. It's failed and maybe it's lower traffic. It's, it's gonna be such an extensive repair, it's not gonna get any worse on some of these. So a lot of these you see us trying to work in that range of three, fours, fives. Um, but anyway, so we do that and then we take into account traffic volume. We're on year two of when we started this plan. And we're about, you know, halfway done through year two project. So we're seeing positive results, but it's just, it's just gonna take time.
What? Being gone, uh, what is our average cost of overlay right now? I know, I know we're putting on thickness, we're bringing on whatever, mile of what, per mile or?
Yes.
I'm just curious. And if you don't have it, no big deal. That's just my, I won't know.
Yeah, for a mile of street, Millin overlay is gonna be well over three hundred thousand on.
It's a lot.
That's with no base repair, no curb repair, no concrete, simple asphalt on one.
Milling and hopefully.
We don't have a lot of that.
I knew you'd gone with asphalt and everything. Appreciate it. Thank y'all. We will get back with you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate y'all's time. Danny?
Yes, sir. Uh, these are the, uh, public hearing list for adjudications under twenty-one nineteen eleven. Uh, if they're marked in yellow, I won't read them. Uh, eight fifteen Avery Bailey Investments LLC, eighteen twenty-five South Crispin Avenue, INSD and J W Foster, six oh eight Lane Street, Eddie Bishop and Rosie Pippens, Lane Street Parcel thirty-three dash twenty-eight dash six seventy dash zero zero dash nine hundred, Wilkie and Early Louis Turner, uh, seven oh four and a half, South Victoria, Annie W. Rose, three seventy South Bow Avenue, Larry Davis, care of Burnett Haynes, seven thirteen East Sunflower Road, Chala Global Development LLC, five oh seven North Crispin Avenue, F W Burdon, five oh five North Crispin Avenue, Frank Burdon, twelve oh nine Lewis Avenue, Ella E. Powell, care of LaTrenda Bounds, uh, three seventy-one South Bow Avenue, Chala, Enz, Ella Inc., up and skipping down, we only have four more. Two oh two West Carpenter Street, Lot Thirty, Valerie Hudson, four oh five Clasco Place, McConnell Estates LLC, seven oh five Cross Street, Ruthie He Young, care of Lucille Williams. And finally, one oh four East End Street, Charles, Audrey, Joyce, and Sharon Fitzpatrick. Is anyone here to answer to any of these request extension? There being no one, it would be in order for the board to move to adjudicate.
No, my. Motion by Gaines Pellet.
Second.
Second, I'm Sanders, all in favor.
Aye. Opposed.
Uh, Josh?
Guys, I'll hit the, the high point. I know y'all have a copy of my report. Uh, we do have active construction on, uh, I think five projects every day. Uh, but I'll hit my action items. If y'all have any questions, y'all please let me know. Uh, first, on our Shelby Sewer Basin project, we're working on, uh, point repairs and on the, the intersection of Maple and Fifth, the bad spot's been open for a while. Uh, we've completed the sewer repair under our contract. Now we need to replace the storm drain that failed as well. We have two quotes recommended to award to the lowest quote.
Of most.
Most. Thank you.
Much by Sanders, second by Abraham, all in favor.
Aye.
All right. Bishop Road, we're, we're actively working, uh, trying to get finished with the seventy-two inch pipe, uh, hopefully by early next week. And then they'll be on to the smaller pipe and starting on the crossing. the smaller pipe and starting on the crossings across Bishop. But last summer, we moved and some additional grant funds we received and updated all of our construction engineering budgets. We never contractually did that. So now we're in the process of requesting reimbursement funds and we realized we failed to submit that last summer. So we have the engineering amendment for approval to match the grant fund budget that y'all approved last summer.
So moved. By Abraham, second Bishop, all in favor.
Lastly, City Hall renovation. We just got this in, a change order request. A few different issues and this came in late today, so we're, we're just got it all out. But a few things we're looking to address. We found some issues with the HVAC that was never connected in the boardroom, had vents that had been disconnected for however long, so it wasn't properly cooling half.
It was getting hot.
We found some foundation, some areas where we were going to bear that new beam on. It, it doesn't have a foundation like we thought, so we're having to make some adjustments to the structural beam. Changing out some hardware across City Hall. The biggest thing is in this breakdown is moving the boardroom wall back. When we were under design, we thought that that back wall was low bearing at the connection to the safe. It turns out there's a beam that is not low bearing that was put in under some renovation at some point in time. It's not load bearing, it can be moved. So we haven't heard the price to include pushing that wall back. I think about three and a half feet to make a narrower hallway in the back would give you a bigger boardroom area. So.
I have a question. Is this going to affect the timeframe? Have they asked for an extension or anything? Or we still in the same timeframe?
Well, they're, I'm sure they're going to ask for a little bit of time on it, but they are right now. Until this decision's made, they're kind of out of standstill because the next step is to start putting it back if we're not going to tear anymore out.
What's the total cost of this change order?
Thirty-five, one eighty.
Five, one eighty.
Okay. I make a motion, we approve. Not a motion by Ted, second by Gaines Pellet.
Only other thing we are talking about right now. They, we're trying to wrap up the emergency vehicle access road, you see coming into airport this week, so.
Josh, I just went down South Street a while ago and y'all milled it down?
Yes.
There is a manhole way down there on the stand of it. That thing sticks up about, I don't know, it looks like it's sticking up four, four or five inches. I think some of these low profile cars, somebody's going to hit it and there's not, it's not painted or nothing.
We'll, we'll have it, we'll have it March in the morning. Several of these manholes, they were removing several today that were raised when they overlay these concrete streets with risers. And so we're knocking off the risers today, getting them cut back down. Some of them were done as a utility repair at some point, and so it's concreted all the way to the top. So we're going to have to tear out the street, cut off the manhole. It's, it's going to be a little bit more substantial repairs. We're going to have to have it marked until we can get a contractor over there to cut them down, which is outside of our milling overlay scope. So we'll have to have someone else.
Do it all.
But we'll make sure it's, it's marked if, if it can't be lowered by.
Yeah, that one, that one was real dangerous.
Well, thank you for the progress.
Yes, sir. Anything else for me?
You've been awesome.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, Josh. All you did.
Danny? Thank you. It would be in order to do a motion and second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second. Motion by Gaines, uh, by Abraham, second by Gaines Pellet, all is in favor. Like.
Got a report.
It's personal.
I've got a report.
They don't care.
Got reports from both Katie and I in the file. And then I'm just, I'm telling you, I've got this long memo on a drainage matter that I probably will finish in the morning. We'll upload that early for the next meeting because it's got a lot in it. And just, let's call it to your attention when that comes. And the main thing that I have would be a discussion in executive session. We have an employee matter whenever, whenever it's time to do one.
So what's the deal with this mural?
Oh, Katie, yes. This is, they have someone out of Delta State who is here working on a visa that has, and you saw the, you saw the
I mean, I'm.
All the way across the back of the office. Yeah. They're going to do, or the proposal is to do a mural all across and so we can get people to start parking in the back and walking down the way to the
So just, we don't have the door owner's permission yet to paint the back.
Oh, yeah. I think one of those is Abrahams and one of those is a Griffith and then, I don't know if it's going on anybody's ears or not.
How they, wait on Sam Rosen to get permission.
Okay, what's that?
Of course.
She doesn't have the cost yet, but it looks like in her report, she says that twenty-five thousand is coming from one of the committees to the other and that
That's right.
Should be, should be what it is.
By the Heritage Commission.
Pretty, pretty impressive.
Oh, the, the pictures. Katie came in all excited and we don't know about it for a bit. It's, it's, it's going to look really good.
So, but we will know for sure the cost.
Yes, ma'am. And you've got the money to do it for the time.
Okay.
We need no action, girls. We ain't got permission.
No.
Okay. Is that you?
That's me.
Bill?
Yes, sir. I have two items of planning commission. One, if you all board members remember several months ago, Ethan Sanfertain or subdivision on Carleton Walker. He came back and he wanted to do it in phases and I told him we had to go back and re-submit a preliminary. Did y'all get the preliminary in Dropbox? If not, I got some hard copy too. And it's same thing. He already has approved from the state and everything. It's just putting it in across the minutes to make, make it leave.
You got any objection to it?
I have any.
I might emotionally accept that change.
Thank you. Motion by Bishop, second by Abraham, all in favor.
The second request I have is Mr. Charles Price. He purchased a land on Johnson Avenue. And he has a house beside it and he wanted to build a house beside his house. So he's short on minimum lot area and minimum lot width. He's requesting a bench to advertise.
He's got to post it. He's going to.
Put it on advertising.
Put the post.
Okay.
So moved.
My Gaines Pellet.
Okay.
Motion by Gaines Pellet, second. Second by Sanders, all in favor. All opposed.
And that's all I have, man.
I got a couple things.
Okay.
All right. So right, right across the street from Cannon's GMC. I saw they leveled that lot off. And now they're putting slag on it. You know what I'm talking about?
Behind the, behind the old Donut shop.
Yes, behind the old Donut shop.
The guy that owns the car lot in front, he, he got too many cars up there, so he's trying to put them on hard surface, keep them parking on the grass and stuff.
But I mean, we're just going to let them put slag all across there?
They say hard surface. He's just trying to get it, I guess, situated until you get it, get it going.
I mean, the planning commission is not approving.
They didn't prove anything. No permits, nothing, nothing that had been approved yet.
Well, you think he's going to do it?
We're going to check with them and see.
Because I mean, we don't need people to start making gravel, gravel parking.
It's a hard surface. You had to pack it in, something like that there.
All right. That's the other thing. And this is really, I don't know, this is really not Billy, but I guess it is to a certain extent because you work with the beautification committee? Or is that separate? You know, we got downtown Cleveland looks so good, but right at the very end of the walking trail, we got a strip between those cross ties that looks kind of scraggly looking.
North End?
Yes.
They're waiting on the there, there's going to sign.
And then they're going to fix it up?
Yes.
Well, with the project, the highway, you're talking about right by the highway?
Right at the highway.
Okay, so the Highway Eight Sidewalk Improvement Project, all that is going to be impacted when, when that project takes place. So, because they contacted me about doing something there and I told them that Josh and I talked about it and said, anything you invest there is going to be wasted funds because when that project starts, because that intersection's going to be redone right there. And the sidewalk. It's right there. It's going to be, it's going to impact that. So we're waiting until that project takes place.
Done there. We're, we're going to hang up the sidewalk and have a a half month design, like one of our architectural renderings. That one, we're just waiting on Federal Highway to tell us we can advertise. So it's going to be, it's going to happen this fall.
We're waiting.
Two more things.
Yes, sir.
I've been on the road today. All right, you know, and we talked about this a year ago. If you go, if you go out a while away from White Street all the way down to the north end of town, we've got about five people or six people selling tires. And they got tires everywhere. It looks so trashy. We got, and we got more tourists coming to Cleveland now. Next year alone, one of the boat companies has got eighty-four visits here. It is, to me, it's so disruptive to the looks of Cleveland when you just got tires thrown everywhere.
Safety issue too.
It's cute. Something to regulate.
We have given them violation letters and we've got MDQ to come in on them as well. So we've been actually working on those.
Okay.
But we will follow up on them again as well.
Well, I mean, I, I think, I think we need to rewrite the ordinance book or something. And why can't they put them inside just like Good Year and everybody else does, as you know?
They can have a trailer. They can put a trailer out back and put them in.
Well, you know, the thing about it is, is this, they have their new tires stacked. But then all the used ones they trade on, they just got them piled up like a dirt pile.
That's what I'm talking about. They can put like a
Tire trailer.
A tire trailer.
All of them.
And, and then when they, when their tire recycler comes, they pick them up out of that trailer.
Whatever, whatever we're going to do, let's do it before the tourism committee comes because they're going to be trying to visit us.
I mean, and that's
Federal regulations and state regulations on that. We need to see if there's following guideline that is supposed to be following. Yeah. So with the tire recycling.
But Rob is making a good point, you know? Because you own the tourism committee now, right? We, we got money the state will give us, but after they, and they see all that junk. You know, if we don't take care of our own business, they're not going to help us take care of it.
That's right.
Anyway, I just wanted to bring that back up because it's getting worse. It's not getting better.
But the good point is, what is I wanted to say? So we can make sure.
I think we, I think we have an ordinance that addresses that thing.
It's added on the property's maintenance, cleaning up exterior property.
I mean, it's.
And we can put on public nuisance as well if they said.
And it could be done.
We're going to address.
Public nuisance is the fastest way. If you invite them to come see you.
Let's do it.
He has a tire trailer.
I mean, and I'm good with that. I'm good with it. I figured you had an insect trap. You said you had three. Anyway, well, the, the other one is just, for the most part, when you ride down sixty-one and eight, people are taking care of their frontage. But we got some people who are not taking care of it. And, and it just, you know, for whatever it's worth, Billy, I just think we need to stay on these folks and get them to clean it up.
And I had a meeting a couple of weeks ago and we've come up with a solution to the problem and we're working, we're working on it. We got it.
Good.
We'll make sure they clean it up.
All right.
All right.
Good. One, one thing I want to mention in Ward Six, there are too many actual car lots where people's doing mechanic work all over Ward Six. So we really need to put a little teeth in that so we can stop people from just working on cars anywhere.
Yes, sir. We're going to have cars on that.
These are unlicensed, unlicensed. Cars in the yard. They all, yeah.
They get their homes.
I promise and I appreciate it.
Yeah, we're working hard. We're going to get it though.
Two years in, you say, four of one also.
Yeah, I got it. Well, I put about nine.
Thank you, Bill.
That's all I have. I have everything else for me.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Anna?
How are y'all? Y'all have my report unless you need anything from me.
Anybody need Anna? You did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
Y'all have my report if y'all have anything to make.
No, sir.
I just want to congratulate you on being elected to the executive board.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Greg? Hey, when's the new truck coming?
It should be November, November.
Okay.
They're building it as we speak.
And we're working on a MOU to fit what y'all approved last time, wouldn't say.
Believe them. Okay.
That was my question.
What, what we'll do is we'll do a bill of sale, but it won't be signed yet. It'll be with an MOU kind of covering the terms.
You did a great job on the sale price. That's great.
Greg's quite a salesman.
Jamie?
Y'all have my report unless y'all have any questions for me.
Anyone? How the animals holding up in this weather with the air conditioning?
We're all holding up as best we can over here. We got a lot of fans out in all the places, so we're just trying to keep everybody cool.
Thank you.
Afternoon. Afternoon, Tom.
So y'all know that Hospital Water Tower, well messed up a couple of months ago. Missed out water, finally figured out the issue. They gave us a quote on what it would cost to fix it. I'm just here to ask permission to accept that quote.
Did we get a second one?
Uh, we can't rather get a second one on that because
This one, okay.
Yeah, that'd basically be like, you know, asking us for them to put it all back and then have somebody else come in and tear it all down.
And it's like six, eventually six of that.
I see. We, we're going to have to do a budget amendment for this.
We've looked at his budget. We will have to do a budget amendment, but it's going to, I think we're going to be able to reallocate some funds, but I will look and see what we may need to increase, but we've been looking at his budget hard. And hopefully we'll be able to reallocate as much of this as possible.
How much is it?
Sixty-three thousand. But this is, this essentially needs to be approved as, as an emergency.
Well, yeah.
Because we have the entire water.
We lose that water pressure.
The water problem is down.
I'm making a motion to approve.
I second.
Motion by Gaines Pellet, second by Abraham, all in favor.
You get a chance this month to frame the foods on all of your tentacles.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. That's all I have. You got anything for me?
I've had a couple of residents. Can I mean, go ahead. No, I'm just asking.
Steven.
Steven.
Okay, sorry. But I've had to be read.
I've had a review about our, our water in certain areas of town that it has a dingy or darker or toward a brown. What timing was going on?
It could be, not a lot of usage in that area.
Cleaning.
Yeah, it could be, we could flush them out. We know what area. Y'all having those issues. It could be less usage throughout the day, so.
Thank you. But it's not citywide.
No, sir.
Thank you.
It'd also be their internal air pipes.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah. These are new homes.
We continue.
Thank you.
Thing else?
They're good about, if somebody wants to collect some of that water in the Bible, they're good about just give it to them. They'll check it in a second.
Absolutely. And like I told Michelle and you of y'all, if anybody in your ward is concerned about their water, it costs nothing. I can come and collect a sample. I can send it to the state and I can get specific results for that specific address. So if anybody has any concerns about their water, I would be more than happy to come take a sample.
Thank you.
Send it out.
All right. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Only thing I have outside my report is Lois asking for the lowest and best vehicle with the pants around the turntable.
This was a present budget. This is just approval of the quote because it's over ten thousand.
So moved. Brian, second by Ted, y'all all in favor? That's it. Ben, up your, your building.
Clear out a returning person. I've got a couple things for you tonight. First is approval of the lowest and best quote to replace all the ceiling tile insulation.
Move. Second.
Moved by Robert, taken by Brian, all in favor.
Second is approval of the North April Expansion Taxway Connector. Change order number two, and this is the supplemental agreement that we've worked out between us, Roy and Thomas to use the additional grant funds to extend the rail.
So moved.
Motion by Brian, second. Second by Ted, all in favor.
And then the last thing I have is approval of the North Expansion Taxway Connector Amendment One for large designs.
So moved. Second. Motion by Brian, all in favor.
You on the roll.
Same thing I have.
I get you. Christian?
I don't know what I'm reporting. I try to have something to make. Christian, yes, I, I was confronting about ALO Park, known as Stewart and Allison Park. Are they in an update? So what, what is your plan? Do you have anything in mind as far as grading ALO Park?
Bear in the process of getting folks and different things for playgrounds as well as, you know, these things.
these means we have to see to put up, but, uh, we had, uh, air holes where we had an incident with those, so we're gonna step away from those, go to the clinic, uh, and, um, and vote for vendors as well.
Thank you.
Mail from everybody. Lady A.
Okay, I have a couple of things for you, uh, tonight. The first item is to, um, approve order to ratify our existing contracts. I uploaded a list of those as well as the actual contracts in Dropbox for you.
So moved.
Motion by Ted, second. Motion by Gaines Flady, all in favor. All opposed.
The next item I have is, um, at this meeting, um, after our election, we need to appoint our election commissioners or reappoint our election commissioners.
So moved.
Motion by Robert, taken by Abraham, all in favor. Opposed.
And the next item of business that I have is in order to approve the voting delegates for twenty twenty-five MML Summer Conference. Typically, um, the voting delegates have been, uh, the, the primary delegate is the mayor, and then we have an alternate delegate. In the past, the alternate delegate has been Alderman Sanders. So it is at the discretion of the board. Um, I know that the mayor is attending, um, MML, so it is at the discretion of the board. If you wanna stay with those delegates or with Alderman Sanders as the alternate.
So moved. Seven. Motion by, uh, Abraham, looking back ahead, all in favor.
All right. The last item that I have is we received a request from Emily at the library for, um, an Eagle Scout project to be done there at the library. Um, I sent the email with the request and a picture. Um, it's a fence project there, um, so seeking approval for that Eagle Scout project to be done.
So what are they doing? Repairing the fence?
Yeah, they wanna do it. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Gaines Flade and his house, second, all in favor.
That's all I have, but I do wanna remind everyone that our scheduled second meeting is actually next week, the way the calendar falls. Typically, I push that off a week so that we have two weeks in between, but that would fall when we are all gonna be at MML. So we will stick with our regular schedule, so we will gather again next Tuesday, so just wanna let everyone know.
Same time, eight thirty?
Yes, sir. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Helen?
Yes, sir. I only have a couple of items on the employee act recommendation, and that is not including the, uh, executive session item that we have for approval, unless you have any questions.
You don't have any questions?
Motion.
I make a motion to accept the recommendation, HR.
Second. Motion by Brian, second by Gaines Flady, all in favor.
I think I have such an item in executive.
Robert?
Yeah, I don't have anything. I just. On the local, they, they level so. Most time. Department heads, all of you here present tonight, thank you for all you do.
Ms. Alvin?
I don't have anything. I would like to say, uh, to the department heads, you all are doing a great job. Thank you, um, for your work and hard work. Thank you all.
Ted?
I don't have anything to say.
Uh, Gary? I, I mean, I just don't stick to the same thing. I think when you look good, people take care of you, and, uh, I like to see Cleveland looking good.
Amen.
I like, I like what we're doing, cleaning up, uh, because we got, we got a lot of people coming through here on a regular basis.
I think, you know, almost all of it, it's, this downtown is looking, uh, we don't need to have it where we turn people off before they ever get there.
Right. I agree with anything we do on our entrance ways that make us look better. You know, it's called tech, it's a little, it's on, uh, I agree one hundred percent. Robert?
Brian? I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Nothing.
Abraham.
Thank you. Uh, I have nothing. My first meeting.
Anything for this?
Yeah, we made it. I've been major for us. Uh, but I have cards. Y'all have my emails. I think Michelle sent it all out, phones, mail addresses, anything you need from me. I am available, and, uh, I'm trying to do what Michelle tells me to do. As we do. Leave me for anything, please call. I am available. Thank you, gentlemen, for all the childhood. And I appreciate all you department heads and ladies.
Litigation index. Looking down the.
So, um.
A car litigation.
Oh, is that the only thing we got? We have employee.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. We consider entering, entering into executive session for, uh, employee action and, uh, property.
Motion second by Abraham.
It's plain. Make a motion. We enter.
Even this is the curve.
Yeah. I was wondering who's gonna be able to remember. I, I still moved.
Motion by Brian, second by Brian.